All right, Scott, we all set?
Yes, sir, we are good to go.
All right, excellent. Good evening, like to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting of the Burlington City Council. It is August 16th, 2021, and this is our work session for the month of August. Due to the coronavirus pandemic, this meeting is being held via the Zoom platform. Meeting is being live streamed on the city of Burlington's YouTube page at youtube.com/COBNC. And please note this meeting is being recorded. If anyone has any technical or connection difficulties this evening, please contact our community engagement manager, John Vernon, at 336-513-5440 for support. For staff comments or to address council or staff at the appropriate time, we ask that you use the raise hand feature in Zoom or press star nine if you're joining us via phone. At the appropriate time, our staff will call on you and notify me that you wish to speak. As a preliminary matter, I am Mayor Ian Baltudis, and I'd like to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on this agenda are present and can hear me. Members present when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Councilmember Jim Butler.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Harold Owen.
Here.
Staff presenting when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. City manager Harden Watton.
Here.
City attorney David Huffman.
Here.
Interim city clerk Beverly Smith.
Here.
Director of Planning and Transportation Mike Nun.
Here.
Interim Transit Manager John Ando.
Here.
Did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes, you did.
Ando, okay, very good. City engineer Todd Lambert.
Here.
Director of Finance and Risk Management Peggy Reese.
Here.
Interim Police Chief Eric Kearns.
Here.
Director of Recreation and Parks Tony Laws.
Here.
Economic Development Project Manager Blake Moyer.
Here.
Planning Manager Conrad Ometto.
Here.
And PTRC staff Michael Blair.
Here.
Very good, thank you, everyone. We'll begin this agenda with item A. It's our 2020 to 2021 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Plan, also known as the CAAPER. This time we'll recognize PTRC staff Michael Blair. Welcome back, Michael.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is the CAAPER report, which has been due every year that you've had CDPG grant since 1974. Rebecca Ashby is on here with us. She has been handling a lot of the reports and everything else that we've been doing for the city since we started. And I'd like to have her just give you a quick overview and we can answer any questions if you have it after she's finished. Thank you.
Very good, welcome Rebecca.
Thank you. So, as Michael said, this is a report that's required by HUD every year. And this is a report based off of our consolidated annual plan. We had some really good spending in the fiscal year covered from July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. We spent $710,358.37. I understand that there is, folks, there's some expediency in time. So, I'm not going to rehash everything that's on the handouts that you guys have. So, but the bulk of the spending was spent on city updates. We spent $292,445.45. And those activities included finishing out city park restrooms, the Sharp Road pedestrian crossing, and the Hall River project. Another good chunk of the funds was spent for nonprofit direct care services. And out of that amount, the $216,000, about 106,000 of that was spent through CARES Act funding. So, that covered things like rent and utilities and water bills and things like that. So, I'll open the floor if anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Rebecca. And as she mentioned, those details are spelled out in our agenda packet with the attachments. Any questions from council members regarding the CAAPER? Very good. Request is to recommend approval on this, any objection to approval?
I'll make a motion that we approve that recommendation is presented.
I don't know that we need a motion on it. Will it be included on the consent agenda?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with that, that's fine.
Yeah, that's good. So, there'll be a public hearing on the September 21st, 2021 city council meeting on this one. Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
So, all right, without objection on that, we appreciate Michael and Rebecca joining us this evening. And we'll move on to item B on our agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item B is our Link Transit Fleet Replacement Plan. This time we'll recognize Director of Planning and Transportation Mike Nun.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening we have a couple items to present to you, but before John gets started, I wanted to introduce him to you. John went through our assessment process, actually, as we've been recruiting for a full-time transit manager and was our selected candidate for that position. But during that time, unfortunately, John had some changes personally that he needed to take care of. And John and I discussed ways that maybe could help us out. And we've come to an interim arrangement for a part-time position. He can help Link Transit out. John comes from Columbia Comet System in Columbia, South Carolina. He's got many years of experience in transit operations, grant management, et cetera. As you can see, as he was our selected candidate for the full-time position, there's just a little bit more about him. Been very, very pleased and thankful that he can help us. We're continuing to recruit for a full-time position, but we'll be using him part-time until we can bring someone in for full-time. So, I'll turn it over to John. He's going to go through two items with you tonight and update again on our fleet replacement process and then speak to you about our TransDev contract for our operator wage increase. So, John, I'll turn it to you.
At the top of the evening, Council, Mayor, and Council members, John Ando, Interim Transit Manager. And today we're going to talk about fleet replacement plan. And the current situation in fiscal year 2022 is that we need to start replacing the transit buses that were purchased in 2015 and placed in the service in 2016. They're seven-year vehicles or 200,000 miles, whichever comes first. And we have seven of those for our fixed route system. Our contractor TransDev provides two paratransit buses, which are five-year or 150,000-mile vehicles. And below is our pictures of the current fixed route bus and the current paratransit bus. Our proposed procurement strategy, based on the available funding that we've received, is that we would purchase two 30-foot electric buses and three paratransit buses that be city-owned this fiscal year. Next fiscal year, we would look at two 28-foot Arbox Spirit of Mobility vehicles. In fiscal year '24, one 30-foot electric bus. Fiscal year '25, two 30-foot Arbox Spirit of Mobility buses. And then by fiscal year '25, all 2016 buses would be retired. And we would have three of those buses that are on heavy-duty chassis and four of those buses that would be on medium-duty chassis. The paratransit vehicles would be light-duty chassis so that we can obtain bus operators without CDL vehicles, CDL licenses. The goal is to transition to zero emissions. That's the trend that other transit agencies across the country are going with. And by transmitting or by transitioning to these electric buses, it would allow us the opportunity to start reducing our dependency on fossil fuels as well as lower our costs to operate these transit vehicles. We envision that we will start out with two electric buses first, and we would obtain these from the state of Georgia's procurement using the vendor BYD, or also known as Build Your Dreams. Battery-electric buses are fairly cost-effective, and we would build a relationship with Duke Energy to make this happen. We envision charging these buses at our contractor's facility with a backup charger at the city corporation yard. Each bus would come with its own charger. We would follow a special schedule with Duke Energy to allow us to charge at a special rate. Generally, there's a small demand charge for anything over 250 kVA. And the peak demand time is 1:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. We envision that the buses will be charged after 9:00 p.m. It costs about $625,000 to purchase a 30-foot electric bus, and it charges about $72,000. And it's estimated that we would recoup our investment in 3.6 years. This slide here just gives you a perspective on electric versus diesel lifecycle costs. And that you would see, we would pursue battery-electric rapid charge. So, you would see the lifecycle costs are significantly lower as compared to diesel going as far up to LNG. And that the table below gives you an example of how it would be with a 40-foot bus.
John, can you describe the difference between a rapid charge and a slow charge vehicle?
Yes, a rapid charge basically means that within 15 to 20 minutes, the bus would be fully charged and ready to go back into service. You won't get the full capacity of the charge, however. Whereas with a slow charge, you would be able to get the full capacity to charge, but that would take six to eight hours. And you generally do the slow charge overnight, and you do the rapid charge during the day if you have to recharge the bus due to it getting to a low, low charge.
Okay, so our vehicles would charge at night for that favorable rate, but they would be equipped with the rapid charge technology? Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
All right, thank you. Is that actually a question? Is that payback period, I would assume that there's a factor in there around operational cycle? And so, if you're rapid charging and you have more operational time, it's paying back. Is that still efficient if we're charging overnight without any direct improvement on the usage?
It would be, and the reason why is because of the fact that we would more likely be rapid charging during the peak period. So, we paying that peak demand charge. But overnight, we would be paying the lesser charge. So, that's where you, that's why you notice that the slow charging has a slightly higher lifecycle cost compared to the rapid charge.
Okay. Thank you, John.
No problem. So, this gives you a perspective of electric versus gasoline cost. This is based on March of 2021. If we were to, when you compare the gasoline gallon equivalent to electric, back in March, it was $2.72 per gallon. The electric charge for a 30-foot electric bus would be about 96 cents when converting the rates that Duke Energy asks for electric buses. So, how would we procure these buses and where would the buses come from? The FAST Act, which funds public transit and other infrastructure throughout the country, allows for cities and governments to do cooperative agreements to purchase these type of vehicles. State law in North Carolina allows us to do this type of procurement. We have looked at multiple cooperative procurements across the country and felt that the state of Georgia has the best value procurement as relates to a 30-foot electric bus, which is why we were proposing to go with their cooperative procurement. And then for the paratransit vehicles that we're proposing to purchase, as well as future Spirit of Mobility Arbox vehicles, state of Oklahoma has these vehicles available, and we would procure those vehicles from their cooperative procurement. Both procurements do meet a federal transit agency administration requirements. This here gives you a perspective of what the buses would look like. The interior shot that you see is a photo of the Spirit of Independence bus, which would be the proposed paratransit bus. And the vehicle to the right is the actual Spirit of Independence vehicle. It's a low-floor vehicle, so you can basically use a ramp for mobility devices to access the vehicle compared to our current cutaway bus that requires a lift. The bus below the interior shot is the BYD 30-foot bus, and that is a low-floor bus as well. We believe that this bus will be able to maneuver the city streets well and would meet the needs of the city. The bus to the right is the current Link Transit Spirit of Mobility Arbox vehicle. And that's the vehicle we'll continue to purchase in addition to the electric buses. All of the vehicles will be branded like the current Link Transit scheme that you see below. On the financial implications, one reason why we want to purchase paratransit vehicles is that we can potentially bring down the cost of paratransit on a per-trip basis. Presently, TransDev includes the vehicles that they're providing for the paratransit system in their per-trip cost, which is why the rate is about $61.40. Owning these vehicles can allow us a potential savings of up to $30,000 per year on a per-trip basis. By going electric, we envision that there'd be a reduction in our gasoline budget and then that the electricity cost would be included in the future contractor's hourly rate. Our next procurement for our contractor would be in July of 2022. We envision that we would fund these buses using Federal Transit Administration funding, 65307, which is the urban area funding at 80%. Our local match would come from the vehicle license tax and the city general fund at 20%. And then for some of the buses that we would be purchasing, we did receive a grant that is 100% federal-funded with no local match. And we would be applying some of those funds to these bus purchases as well. The BYD buses would cost about $1.2 million, that includes the chargers. The paratransit buses will cost about $375,000. We also will pursue the 10% state matching grant funds as well as other FTA funds through the 5310 and the 5339 programs to replace buses in future years. If we're successful in getting the state matching grant, we would reduce the general fund contribution and the vehicle licensing tax contribution by 10%. So, our recommendation to the council basically is while there's no formal city council approval required, we're just seeking city council concurrence to proceed with the proposed Link Transit Fleet Replacement Plan. And in your packet, you should see a copy of how we would replace the fleet over the course of the next five years. And I'll be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you, John. Any questions from council regarding this proposal?
Just, I've got a couple of questions. So, the existing buses that we're going to be retiring, will we be selling those and retaining that income?
Yes, it is. It is the desire that we would auction off those vehicles. Under the FTA requirements, we're able to keep about $4,999 of that. That could be used anywhere within the city. Once we exceed that, we have to return the funds back to the FTA. And then they in turn can allow us to use it solely for Link Transit operations or they may use it for other federal grant purposes.
So, that's $4,999 per bus or for?
Per bus.
Per bus. And then the, if indeed those, I'm sure they'll go for more than that. That money goes back to the FTA, and how does that come back, does that come back to the Link Transit system or?
We would make, for that. We would make a request to Region 4 to ask if we can reincorporate those funds back into a future Link Transit grant, perhaps to support replacement buses or to cover our operational costs, which the regional administrator would have to approve.
So, okay, so there's really, so there's no guarantee that we would get the additional money back beyond the $4,995 of where bus, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And the one reason why that's the case is because the federal government basically is putting in 80% of their revenues into these buses. So, they're wanting to recoup basically their investment that they're providing to us.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I understand.
Jim, did you have some additional questions?
Yeah, so what, what is the premium that we're paying per vehicle versus diesel or something like we have now? I mean, what is the, what is the premium that we're paying to go electric?
Are you looking on the operating side or on the capital side?
Capital side.
On the capital side, I would say that the gasoline-powered buses are cheaper than the electric buses. You'd probably spend about $350,000 on the, on the capital side for a gasoline-powered bus compared to the $625,000 for the electric bus. So, let's say about a $350,000, a $325,000 difference.
So, the premium's $325,000, of which we're on the hook for basically 20% of that on the match?
That's correct.
Yeah, so that's $70,000 per bus premium out of, out of our system to go electric. That's, that's pretty, pretty significant.
And this is one reason why we would like to phase the electric implementation so that we can ensure that we have the ample funds available. We envision that we would use the 100% no-local match for the electric bus procurement. That's through the American Rescue Plan funds and the CARES Act funding. And we would use the local match really on the paratransit side. But in future years, assuming that FTA does not give us 100% federal funds with no local match, we have to be prepared for that 20%.
Right, that's a good point about the 100%. Does, and does the FTA determine the lifespan of the vehicle or is that just an industry standard?
The FTA does determine the lifespan based on the buses going through what is called an Altuna test in Altuna, Pennsylvania. And it's really based on the chassis.
Yeah.
So, at the minimum, we have to use those buses based on years or miles, whichever comes first.
Right. And that's why the paratransit, being on a half-ton chassis, just doesn't get, you don't get the mileage or the years out of that. It just wears the chassis out.
That's correct.
Yeah.
John, related to that question about the electric bus, in the PowerPoint, it talks about a recoup of 3.6 years on the investment on the electric buses. Is that based on the, that entire cost difference between a diesel or gasoline? Or is that based on our share of that?
That is based on the cost between a diesel or gasoline and the electric.
So, despite that fairly large difference in price, we still do recoup that in 3.6 years of the 12-year lifespan of the vehicle?
That is correct.
So, then after that, it's significantly less expensive then?
Yes.
Okay.
So, assume for purposes of this discussion that the first four years, we're going to be paying a little bit more than we would have paid if we had a gasoline or a diesel-powered bus. But then the balance of the lifespan of the vehicle, we're going to be reaping savings.
Thank you.
And John, again, what's projected lifespan of the vehicle?
The electric bus is a 12-year vehicle or 500,000 miles, whichever comes first. The paratransit vehicle will be a four-year or 100,000 miles, whichever comes first. And the paratransit would be gasoline. There's no reliable electric cutaway vehicle on the market at this point.
Jim, did you have any additional questions?
Not right now, no.
Okay, other council member questions regarding these items?
Our contract that we have now that basically handles our system and handles the maintenance of our, of the fleet, have they been included in this conversation?
Yes, they have. We've had discussions with the general manager about the transition to electric buses. We've even had Duke Energy go out to visit their facility to understand what the charging requirements are. TransDev does have extensive experience in operating electric buses across the country. And even with a few of the contracts here in North Carolina, such as our neighbors in Raleigh, they're also going to be transitioning to electric buses, and that's a TransDev contract.
Thank you.
John, with the procurement requirements related to federal standards on these, these do meet the made in USA for the specific portion, correct?
They do, at the 70% for the steel.
Yeah.
And we do have Buy America certificates from the state of Georgia, from BYD, to that effect, that we would provide to FTA during our, our future China review.
Very good. Other council questions regarding this item? All right, again, this was just presented for council for review, no action is required on this. John, we appreciate you joining us for the first time this evening, and we look forward to working with you as we go forward.
Thank you. And I'm presuming that based on the comments that we have concurring from the council to move forward?
Unless there's any objections.
Well, I've got, we're all have some meetings scheduled this week. I've got a few more questions. Can we just, can we individually, if anybody's got any questions? I know I've got one meeting scheduled with Harden, and I'd like to just put those notes together. I don't, on the cuff, I don't have a problem with it. I just want to be sure I understand the cost-benefit analysis and what it's going to look like long-term. I just want to, I wanted to see the presentation, which was very thorough. I think you did a great job with that. I just want to digest it for a little bit.
Okay, very good. If you could make sure you CC the rest of council on those questions and the answers. All right, anything else on this one?
Do it.
All right, very good. Thank you, John. We'll go ahead and move on to item C on our agenda, the TransDev Services Contract Agreement, Amendment Number 4. And we'll call on John again.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council members. I'm going to jump into this item. So, as you're aware, we contract with TransDev to operate and maintain the Link Transit system, which includes the fixed route and paratransit system. And they provided their proposal in 2015, and council awarded a contract to them in late of 2015, and they started service in June of 2016. Since 2015, TransDev at the time proposed their bus operators to make $12.69 per hour. And fast forward to today in 2021, the wages are the lowest in the region. And as a result, high turnover has been occurring, and TransDev has not been able to hire additional bus operators. We got a request from TransDev to see if what, if we can increase the average rates by $3 per hour. So, we did a survey of all of the transit systems in our region to determine what are they compensating their bus operators? And many of them contract out to vendors like TransDev, National Express, or MB Transportation. And based, as you can see on the left, the average of the wages that we saw is about $15.15 per hour. So, as a result, we did an analysis to determine if we were, could the transit system afford a $3 increase for all of TransDev's frontline employees, which would include the bus operators to help them with being able to retain and attract frontline personnel? Presently, our hourly rate is $55.28 for the fixed route system. It would increase to $60.86 per hour. On the paratransit side, we pay a per-trip cost of $52.92 per trip, and that would increase to $61.40 per trip. We can cover the deficit with the one-time America Rescue Plan Act funds, which requires zero local match from the city or its funding partners that subsidizes the transit system. And below on this PowerPoint, you can see the financial analysis that we conducted to determine how we concluded that we can cover the $140,426 deficit with the American Rescue Plan Act funding. So, our recommendation in relation to this matter is that this item gets added to the August 17, 2021 city council meeting to the consent agenda to authorize the increase of frontline employee wages by $3 per hour effective September 1 of 2021. And that would amend the Link Transit budget to increase the revenue by $140,426.33, and then to authorize the city manager to execute amendment number four with TransDev. We do have commitment from NCDOT that we have the American Rescue Plan funds available to help us in covering our operational costs, as well as, as you heard in the previous presentation, our capital costs for purchasing new buses. And we're actually in the process of preparing a grant to obtain those funding so we can do a drawdown. I'll be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you, John. Any questions from council regarding this item?
John, the revenue number, the 140,000, that's an annual number, is that correct?
That's a one-time number for this fiscal year. This, later on this year, we'll be drafting a request for proposals to go out to bid for a new transit operations and maintenance contractor. And as part of that RFP process, we would specify what a minimum wage requirement should be. And it's going to really depend on the proposals that we get from the various vendors in the industry.
So, technically, then, obviously, it's just no one can control this. Then fiscal year '22, '23, then the 140,000 that would be covered by cares or the funding as we speak now would not be available for the next, for the fiscal year '22, '23, would it?
That's correct. We would absorb that cost in our existing Federal Transit Administration grants that we receive.
50, 50% of it were liable for.
That's correct.
Right.
And then, you have come from our operational partners as well as the city.
Yeah, so we're about 70,000, we'd have to map the city if it's nothing. Basically, it's a bridge, it's a bridge for TransDev to be able to operate the system. Because obviously, when we renegotiate the contract, that, that increase is going to be built in, that new RFP regardless, because whether it's paratransit or fixed route. You know, the question really becomes, do we want to spend our money to bridge contract that we've already agreed on? That's it in a nutshell, is that right?
That is correct.
Yeah.
And I could tell you that our biggest challenges right now, and as you know, the the virus, the coronavirus has really thrown things into a loop. The additional subsidy on unemployment has thrown things in a loop to where the wages of a bus operator is now equivalent to the wages of a retail worker. So what's happening is people who are coming out of the unemployment, going trying to re-enter the workforce, they're now debating, do they want to get a commercial driver's license to drive a bus? Or is it better for them to just go work in retail and not have to worry about the additional licensing requirements? So really, the goal here is to make the bus operator job lucrative to where people are willing to make that jump and consider driving a bus compared to working in a retail environment or fast food. So we can continue to meet our service demands. We're also losing people as a result of the lower wages.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, there's not enough people coming back in the workforce. There's too much free money still in the market. So this ARPA is DOT, is is this DOT ARPA money? It's not, it's not from our pool that we received, is that correct?
That is correct.
So it's got to be specifically used for transit purposes.
That is correct. And actually, it's specific there, some of the language they actually put in ARPA relates to helping sustain transit operations during this pandemic. And one of the criteria is actually wage increases for the bus operators or in essence hazard pay.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's a catch 22, we we exactly to John's point, there's just not enough people in the workforce. And if ARPA from the DOT side is going to fund it, it's nothing that's really going to cost us anything out of our budget. By the time we get into 2022 and redo the RFP, it's a whole new ballgame anyway.
That is correct.
Right.
Yeah.
So technically, then, from the original contract, there's been no change in the salaries for the drivers since the since the contract started in 2016, is that correct?
That is correct.
Bob, did you have a question? I think I heard you chime in.
I think mine has been answered, you know, just a few questions. I'm I'm good.
Very good. Other council questions regarding this? John, I think you touched on turnover, which has been a challenge for governments as well as private businesses for the last period of time. So obviously, this is a timely and important issue to try to resolve. Is there a performance guarantee of some kind built into the contract that if this didn't go, if we didn't approve this, TransDev would would have to kind of make up the difference or figure out a way to get drivers?
Yeah, if this wasn't approved, yeah, it'll be on TransDev to figure it out. We we believe doing this is being a good partner to our contractor. TransDev did hold the line on pricing during the pandemic. Whereas they lost significant revenue because of the fact that we reduced the services. So this is our way of being a good partner back to them.
Yeah, I I agree with that.
All right, so this does require action to add to the meeting agenda, consent agenda for tomorrow evening, August 17. Do I hear any objection to include this to our consent agenda tomorrow evening?
No objection.
Very good. So this will be added to our consent agenda tomorrow evening. Any further questions for John? Well, John, thank you very much. I think you're all done for our agenda this evening.
Thank you for having me. I wish you guys a great rest of the evening.
See you, Don. Thank you.
With that, we'll move to item D on our agenda, the Anthony Road Pre-Regulatory Landfill Assessment Study Phase Two and Recognize City Engineer Todd Lambert. Welcome, Todd.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Hopefully, this will be fairly short and sweet. If you recall back last September, our consultant SNME gave you an update on the Phase One findings and a scope of what they prepared for on Phase Two. Believe it or not, it has actually taken that long to get everything approved through the state, both going back and forth between how S and M E had some stuff worded. And then we went through some turnover at the state level, so we know how new have a new engineer that is our point of contact at the DEQ. But we finally got approval on August 4th, as per the letter in your packet, that the state has made all the costs for Phase Two reimbursable. So what we are asking council to do is add this on the agenda tomorrow night. As you see fit, to approve these items for Phase Two, which would actually be a change order to the original contract to add these items back in and the budget amendment, which offsets for the cost with additional revenue from the state. I'll be happy if you have any questions.
Thank you, Todd. Any questions from council on this one? Rather lengthy amount of description in the agenda packet items, and again, this is no cost to the city of Burlington.
Right.
Todd, what's the timeline on something like this? Did it, was that, was that actually identified?
I think they were, the consultant was expecting about a six to seven month timeline for this phase. Just depending on their contract availabilities to get in there and install everything and do the monitoring. But typically looking at about a six to eight month turnaround for this next phase.
Thank you.
Any other council questions? Any objection to including this in tomorrow night's consent agenda?
Oh.
All right. Thanks, Todd. That was quick. We'll go ahead and keep rolling. Item E on our agenda is ARPA funding update. This time we'll recognize Director of Finance and Risk Management Peggy Reese. Welcome, Peggy.
Thank you, council, for the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm going to try and share my screen with you. You'll let me know when you see it.
It's coming up now. We've got it.
Okay, so this was in your packet, and I won't spend a lot of time on it, but these are all the different avenues that we have received, CARES money, the CARES Fund itself from the county. We had 124,000 from JAG. We, there was a YMCA daycare where we helped with virtual learning. CARES Senior Technology from a PTCOG grant. And then we're expecting reimbursement from the county for our help with the vaccine clinic. And so I'm going to now hide those columns and focus on just the two that the reason we are here tonight. If I come down, the total of all those funds is $1,321. The last time when I appeared before you with, before council, all the advice from the School of Government and the LGC was to wait before you decided on what you wanted to do with the 11.5 million of ARPA funds. However, we have a report that is due August 31. And in that report, I have to include any expenses that we incurred from March 3rd to July 31st that we want to use some of the ARPA money for. So that is why I'm here tonight. We have incurred 137,440 in payroll expenses and COVID expenses, buying COVID protection supplies, et cetera. And so if council wants to use 137,000 of the 11.51 million dollars for this, I will need to include on the agenda tomorrow night budget amendment to show that we are going to use 137,000 in COVID expenses and revenue for the ARPA funds. So that's why I'm here. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Peggy, the request, if council desires to put this on the consent agenda tomorrow evening?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any council questions for Peggy?
So Peggy, it looks like everything to me is going to be, this is going to be revenue replacement money anyway. So it's going to be eligible to be spent pretty much however we want. Is that not right? Am I wrong there?
Well, we will also include a revenue loss calculation. And for, there are four measurement dates for the revenue calculation. Unfortunately, they don't coincide those calculation dates with our year end. They are calendar year ends, December 31 of 2020, December 31 of 2021, 2022, and 2023. And we learn more every single day. We have to include all our revenues that are eligible. Not just the general fund revenues, this is revenues across all our funds. What is excluded are our water, water revenues, sewer revenues are eligible. Stormwater revenues are included, property taxes, sales tax, all those revenues are included. We do not include the proceeds from installment financing or any interest. Are those very limited things are excluded. So for our December 31, 2020, we also, I'm going to back up, we also have to include donations. And so in calendar year 2020, we received a significant donation. The county paying us back for reimbursement on the animal shelter, almost $3 million. And also some other outside donations, which totaled to the three, almost $3 million. And so we include that one time revenue that really is not a usual revenue for the city. But we are required by the ARPA calculation to include that. So therefore, that turned what we thought we were going to be able to claim a loss for 2020 actually into a profit for 2020 versus the calculated revenue. So however, looking at 2021, I do believe we will have lost revenues there. And I do believe we'll have lost revenues for 2022 as well. But either way, if you would like to use the ARPA funds to reimburse for these COVID expenses of 137,000, I would like to include the budget amendment tomorrow night so that I can include it on the report that's due August 31st.
Peggy, we're still, the number of questions on how ARPA funds can be utilized for projects to still out there that we still have not got answers for. I see no problem using this 137,000 to make up the difference here in terms of what we've experienced from March the 3rd through.
July 31st.
July 31st. Just a fairly small percentage of 11.5 million anyway.
That that will leave about 99% left of the money to be spent if we choose to go the lost revenue out, if council chooses to go the lost revenue out. Yes.
Other council questions regarding this item? Any objection to including this in tomorrow night's consent agenda? See no objection, so this will be added to our consent agenda for tomorrow evening. Thank you, Peggy.
Thank you, council.
All right, we'll keep on rolling to item F on our agenda, which is police topics. This is a follow up to a previous council discussion. And at this time, we'll recognize interim police chief Eric Kearns.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I think each one of you have received a packet and we've had some overview. And I believe Morgan or John's going to share the PowerPoint with us.
And I believe some of the slides are also included in the agenda packet for anyone watching.
So.
But I think Peggy's sharing.
I'm trying to stop my share, I'm sorry.
All right, Morgan, we've got your screen up.
Thank you, Morgan, if you just move on to the next slide there. As you know, I have a right much information to share with you, so we'll discuss briefly the strategic plan and how that goes into gun violence and our plans there to move forward with the, which ties back into the grant for the Six Officers. We do have a tuition reimbursement program we would like to make you aware of. Time back into questions about retention salary study, current and future staffing, the COPS grant, where that's at, and if the city chose to do funding outside of grant funding and BPD youth programs and alternative community programs. Is what I'll try to briefly, not as quick as Todd Lambert did just a minute ago, but I will move as quickly as I can for you. For you. And get to the next slide. So the 28, 19, 2021 strategic plan was eight community work sessions attended by various people of our community. I mean, for different professions, help us provide better service to community needs. It was also internally hosted by staff community surveys. It is completing in 21, and Chief Austin will be tasked with shaping our next strategic plan for 2224 when he comes into office. It planned does have eight pillars, which directs our focus in our strategic direction. So there's action steps for each pillar, and I will give you a very high overview of this. Keeping in mind that we track each action step quarterly, making sure they're accomplished, if not, they're modified due to budgetary staffing or statutory inputs. So we do review each one of those as we move along throughout the year. Morgan, if you'll go to the next one. So the pillars, interactive relationships between police and the community reduce crime. Some of the action steps here are directly focused to how we patrol the area. We've reduced our 10 districts down to four beats. And our deployment of patrol officers. We enhanced the use of data within the structure of intelligence-led policing to help us be more effective in enforcement efforts. Improve traffic safety. We have now deployed traffic officers back out a lot more, and hopefully you're seeing a little bit reduced speeds. And our crashes have started to diminish. Which helps us work effectively with other jurisdictions, identifying common offenders, using software and other interactive tools. Which goes back into pillar three heavily, operating data-driven staffing model. Deploying uniformed staff to ensure public safety. And one of the action steps there is deploy uniformed staff in a manner that is informed by data from pillar one, helping to ensure public safety, reduce crime, and improve quality of life. So we've had our shooting instances. Think you've seen that we're working with Aliments County Sheriff's Office and other agencies to help produce that. Which will lead a little bit further into our other discussions tonight. But you'll see that pillar two is always on there with the agent department, central located new police facility. Number four, employee training, development, wellness, which we have a great program, we believe. Professional equipment, technology, and engaged in collaborative problem solving with our community. Elite name recognition and customer service. And then we'll talk about our youth engagement and youth person and youth crisis council later in this presentation. Morgan, if you'll go to the next one. As you see from 2013, when Chief Smythe came to office, you'll see everything, a lot of things that we have accomplished. And in 2021 was the bubbles of our focus areas, employee health and wellness. Strategically fighting crime and recruitment and retention is our focus areas. You'll see our staffing levels there from 2013 forward. And then moving into 2022, now on the bottom lines there with public input, update plan, and AC action. Clear is always driving best standards, and we try to, we comply with all back in 2021, 484 standards that are applicable to our agency and function. So we try to make sure that we stay within our bubbles and we're concerned about our employee health. And then strategically fighting crime with what we've seen, best practices around us and what we need, how we need to focus our efforts. Morgan, if you'll go to the next one. So recruitment and retention is high on our list. And we've got a lot of information back from our staff throughout the year. Chief Smythe had started looking at this, and I followed through, working with Jamie Doiner, HR director, Fire Chief Jay Mevin, and Chad Slaughter from the city manager's office. So our current city of bronze and reimbursement plan can be found in Human Resources Policy Manual, Section Three, which allows an employee to be reimbursed the full amount for the first $500 of tuition. After the first 500, the city will share equally that tuition up to a maximum of $1,500, $1,500 per fiscal year, which does take some administrative costs to manage the program and tracking those figures. Employees must provide records showing that he or she made a passing grade of C or better on undergrad work or a B or better on. or a B or better on graduate level. We went through, the next slide, please, Morgan. We went through the region, our chief Medman and HR director Joyner and the group, we looked at other jurisdictions and municipalities throughout North Carolina at their reimbursement programs. Alba Marl has three thousand dollar calendar year with a C or better. Any level of higher education. Winston Salem has a lot of administrative costs also of figuring and tracking thousand up to a hundred percent, two thousand, fifty percent max, two thousand with C or better. Greensboro does have a public safety only program with twenty five hundred dollars for associate's degree, five thousand for a bachelor or master's degree. Chapel Hill, five hundred a year for C or better. Salisbury is based on undergraduate course for three hundred undergrad, four hundred for graduate. And they do have a slight contract and must repay if the time commitment is not honored. Castonie is a thousand per employee for the first come, first served. Must repay if time commitment is not ordered honored. So we are not asking for time commitment and the repay. With city has so far not decided to use contracts. So that will not be in our proposal. Charlotte does have one of the largest reimbursement programs for the state. They reimburse North Carolina rate of tuition and fees and fees are could be ranging up to twenty five hundred dollars. On a C or better for associates, beer better for bachelors. So that is one of the better programs, the best program we found in the state. Asheville has a pool of money tied amongst those participating tuition reimbursement programs. So they budget X amount of dollars. And then they come back with whoever decides to go apply for higher education and divide their purse, their budget amongst those that apply. Hillsborough reimburses up to fifty two hundred dollars per calendar year for any degree. And there's those bill for state campus police officers a hundred percent paid. We understand we're not campus police and not absorbing those costs through our budget. So the next slide will be our proposal for reimbursement plan. One thing I did not mention on our current plan is for all city employees. We examined, looking at this just for public safety between police and fire. We have about forty two to forty five employees participating in reimbursement plan. And last fiscal year, there was only two other city employees involved in the reimbursement plan for tuition. So the group decided to propose all full time city employees be eligible, be consistent with our current policy. A flat dollar amount to reduce administrative workload and HR and the tracking of those funds at whatever percentage that might be through the the other programs that have percentages. So we're proposing associate's degree must receive a final grade of C or better. Complete the associate's degree within four years. And then they're reimbursed up to twenty five hundred dollars per calendar year at seventy six dollars per credit hour. We believe that that will, an employee can get their associate's degree without any out of pocket expense. Bachelor's degree, final grade of C or better within six years completion and reimbursed up to four hundred thousand dollars per calendar year. Now four thousand will not take, if they're going full time, take care of all their course and fees, but it will give them a large amount to take care of their tuition. Masters and PhD receive a final grade of beer better, as always required by the universities and colleges. Must complete it within four years and reimbursed up to five thousand dollars per calendar year. Those are proposals for reimbursement plan. We do not have the policy written at this time tonight. So we're, we'll be coming back to you hopefully in September to add this back to a work session for approval to go to council. Any questions there? Moving kind of quick. All right. Thank you, Morgan.
Keep going.
If you'll move on to the next slide. One question was benefits and salary study proposals. We checked with FEMA, PTRC. They informed us that they could conclude a BPD sworn pay study by December twenty twenty one at no increased cost. We also asked that could they include communication staff, about twenty other personnel where turnover is there and highly competitive. And they could conclude the BPD sworn staff, a study and communications added in there and conclude by December twenty twenty one. Professional staff, they could add them, but we would be out the spring of twenty twenty two to do that. We've done some workload pay study comparison internally and we know that we're busier. So per calls for service, our officers are making less money than our partners at the county, elements county or at Greensboro in that comparison. The next bullet there is an internal study and we looked at, we heard about the North Carolina Highway Patrol and the new hiring program they have. Trooper coming in entry level forty six thousand a year with a six percent, six percent increase for the first six years. After six years, they can be making sixty five thousand. Compared to a Burlington officer after six years at forty seven thousand with, after a promotion to police officer two in five years of developmental increase with the.
So Eric, on that one, if I, if I could, on that point about the the, the, obviously the highway patrol is, this looks like a six percent raise is, is part of that. Is that guaranteed when they are hired?
That's the way we understand their program. So also remember that our developmental increase is around two point eight percent a year. And that was based on the last A study that was completed by PTRC and rearranging patrol sworn, excuse me, sworn staff's pay study.
Well, that forty seven thousand, without including any type of merit increases in, in, in addition to two point eight percent developmental increase per year?
If they were performing and they were on top of their game, there may be a little bit more in the money pot left over from the developmental increase for officers or those that did not receive it because of their time. So there's a chance to be a little bit more above forty seven. Yes, sir. That just depends on their work and their.
Thank you.
Evaluation. So we would like to ask if it's supported by council to be add this to the city council agenda for tomorrow night, eight seventeen twenty twenty one for authorization to proceed with the A study for sworn staff and communication staff.
Any objection to from council to include the pay study on our consent agenda tomorrow night?
They'll get this, they'll get the study done by year end and we'll get, we'll get feedback on that. Would we get it as early as January?
As far as I understand, Mr. Butler.
Yes, sir. Council member Butler, we believe we'll have that back in December. We would get that in front of the city council, January work session and review that information with you. And I guess what we're, what was not been stated directly is we would perhaps bring a mid year pay increase or pay change for police and not wait around for the FY twenty two, twenty three process.
Good. Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Obviously, we have to find a revenue source or or cut, you know, cut some expenditures into police at that point in time to balance that out. But that would be our attempt.
Any other questions on this? Any objection to including on tomorrow night's consent agenda?
Oh, no objection.
All right. No objections. That'll be included on tonight, tomorrow night's agenda. And Eric, you can keep on rolling.
Thank you, Mayor. Morgan, if you'll move on to the next slide. So a little bit about our current future staffing. We have currently allocated one hundred thirty nine sworn positions. We have been given the opportunity to currently over hire six, make us a total of one forty five. Recruitment efforts that we are using is recruitment incentive program where officers or employees can be compensated for recruiting someone to our agency. Those additional efforts, billboards, radio, TV, national level job posting, enhance social media advertisements, which we have learning a lot about social media and keyword searches that someone will hit on. And we're really using social media a lot, especially during COVID, to advertise our job postings. Recruitment affairs and open houses have been successful for us. However, during pandemic with COVID, we're not able to open the doors to do that so much, but we will get back to that as soon as the numbers level out and we can open up the doors and have people in the agency. Morgan, next one. So with future staffing, there's always barriers. And the national anti-police narrative with being less interest in the field is all we're fought. Every agency in the country is fighting these barriers. Smaller population in the current generational market compared to pay from private sector and those are increasing every day to attract, we just talked about trans dev and increase in salary. Highly competitive market within the region, all agencies are competing for the same candidates. We do have six in our basic law enforcement school with ACC. There's about thirty five ish cadets there. Not everybody is hired by an agency. So we are competing with other agencies within the county for that same high quality cadet. The number of applicants are decreasing of what we can hire. We hire, our hiring standards have not lowered. In twenty eighteen, where we had three hundred seventy three applications, we hired nineteen. Twenty nineteen, three hundred thirty six apps, we hired twenty. Twenty twenty, applications went up to almost five hundred there, but we only hired thirteen. And in twenty twenty one, we're having the same issue. Two hundred seventy two applications, we've hired eight so far. Now, we do have several in the hiring process that we're looking at. But again, hiring standards have not lowered. We've got eleven vacancies. Other elements county law enforcement agencies, there's twenty nine without excluding us within the county. Chapel Hills had eighteen vacancies for several years. Raleigh several months ago had eighty three vacancies. Charlotte Mc has two hundred five point forty. Greensboro ninety, they've got sixteen in academy and we're going to be hiring forty more for the next academy. So this is not just a Burlington issue. I can, as a CLIA assessor, I can talk about agencies from Florida to South Carolina, to Arkansas to Virginia or Ohio that always want to look at recruitment tension and how they can enhance their programs. This is a future staffing issue, a current one and a future one, is how to recruit and retain.
Eric, obviously all those different agencies have different numbers of officer staffing. Do you have a percentage, the average percentage that departments are seeing as vacancy?
We're thinking about, oh, we don't have exact numbers of staffing, but all of us are in about the same ten, twelve percent. Some higher, some lower. There are a couple of agencies with zero, but that's hard to figure out. But, but most agencies have a large percentage of vacancies.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Morgan, if you'll move to the next one. So we were asked about the HOPS, TOPS hiring grant and given an update. The grant is for a three year period at a hundred twenty five per position, seventy five, twenty five match. Twelve month retention thereafter to thirty years. And it was the focus on violent crime, gun violence focus area, going back to our pillars of pillar one and pillar three. That grant opened May seventh. They have extended that application period numerous times. We complied with June twenty second, twenty twenty one, and they've extended it several times. I think it had finally closed July twenty sixth. The anticipated notification is this fall on the federal fiscal year. Hopefully around September, October, twenty twenty one. They could push that further out based on that application deadline. We have not heard anything, but that is typically when we hear of grants on the federal fiscal year being October one. So we'll keep you informed as to when that hopefully occurs and hopefully we get approval. Morgan, if you'll go to the next one.
Eric, let's just say based on that timeline of federal approval in in October. In, in terms of then recruitment and and training, when would be a, a reasonable time that those officers could actually be on the street?
So the plan would be, and that is, let me talk just a little bit more here. Mr. Stone, if you will. Plan would be to put six total officers assigned, one assigned to each patrol shift. So we would use existing personnel with time and experience, tenure and experience to fill in as intelligence officers. So we would move forward with the grant and then get into the hiring of six more officers in backfield patrol with those positions. So we would have tenure and experience in those intelligence officers positions. We have already collaborated and redesigned our criminal investigations unit for intelligence sergeant. Who through these last few shootings we've had has passed on information, got that to our patrol units and has been a lot of great police work based off the intel and the information gathered. Naming suspects and being able to get to the information. Crime analysis unit will be moved over to CID over train railroad building. Noben is our ballistics intelligence network, which is national. We have got a couple of other officers trained and Greensboro allows us to come up and test our weapons or bring shell casings we find of crime scenes and get those into the national database, which we're seeing some of those matching back up to crimes in our region in North Carolina. We also fund, help fund the federal gun prosecutor at the US attorney's office. All this allows us to share time system of information and teammates consistently on all shifts having information. That's what we want to have more of with this grant focus with intelligence led policing, determining directing crime prevention methods with violent gun crime, allowing most serious offenders working to enhance quality of life for our community and those that own property in our community and have roots in our community where we can help them feel more safe. So that's our goal with reduce crimes, allow more enhanced focus on community involved activities. That budget for that grant is on the next slide. The grant would fund two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for three years and nothing on year four. The city of Burlington would fund ninety two thousand per year on year four, having to pick those six officers up. There are a hundred and forty thousand dollars in equipment cost. The grant only applies to personnel call, so we would have to pick up all equipment cost. So then year, after year one, there are some reoccurring costs for equipment and things that officers have to have annually. Total cost for the grant would be one point five million dollars under the grant funds. I mean, if you'll go to the next slide, please. Down at the bottom, you'll see projected year one, year two, year three. Seven hundred fifty thousand dollars total grant funding. Eight hundred and three thousand for year four included in that. And then federal seven fifty will be one point five million dollars. That does not include cars in any type of fashion. We can, can retain some older vehicles. They are, as a safety issue, sometimes we're holding them a lot longer than ten years or a hundred thousand miles. So that is another thing that we have not talked about in grant funding, but it will not does not have any money for equipment at all. So we were asked about what the grant, what would cost the city of Burlington to move without a grant? Keeping in mind, Morgan, if you'll move to the next one. If we move before we hear anything about the grant and then we get a grant approval, we can't move forward because of supplanting issues. I think it's important to notice that if we move forward before the grant, then that it would get into supplanting. If we do not get grant approval, then this is what it would cost to move forward hiring six officers. Uh, if we do not get grant approval, then this is what it would cost to move forward hiring six officers. Personnel funding was three hundred forty-two thousand. That is based on entry-level salary of thirty-eight thousand two hundred. First-year equipment would be one forty and six vehicles would be three hundred fifty-four thousand seven fifty. Could we move forward with three or four vehicles? Yes. And keep a couple of the older cars. That's yes. So total personnel equipment cost there in the middle of the screen with vehicles is eight hundred thirty-seven thousand. Year one, if we took the vehicles out, that's four hundred eighty-two thousand. And then reoccurring at the bottom of the screen would be three forty-two per year. That is going to be a little slightly increased based on, uh, what the entry level is or salary study, what it tells us. Annual equipment of fourteen to twenty. Uh, year two, three, and four will be three hundred fifty-six thousand mainly in personnel. Or if how we divided the cars up. So, uh, any questions there? Eight thirty-seven with six officers and vehicles. That's marked vehicles or forty-two with just personnel. All right.
All right, keep going.
Thanks, sir. Next slide. There we go. So we want to talk about youth diversion programs, going back to our strategic plan that we have in place right now. We currently have three governor's crime commission funded positions. They're intended to reduce the number of juveniles going directly into the criminal justice system for low-level offenses. Keep in mind, just a year or two ago, juveniles were, age was increased to eighteen years of age. So we have a youth diversion coordinator, mediation specialist, and youth crisis counselor. All cases of juveniles are reviewed by the youth diversion coordinator and they are diverted if possible. So thirty-seven were referred to mental health, RHA or life skills, one step further between September twenty and December twenty twenty-one. We have diverted, which is a great number, sixty juveniles been diverted from the juvenile court system since January twenty-one. What that means is they are diverted to other programs and they're not, do not have a court record. And then if we can get them the services they need, mental health assessment, access mediation, family support, counseling, and get those services to them and get them out of what could be a crime, life of crime. We've saved them from being in the court system and then getting into a great job or going to college and being better citizens of our community. Morgan, if you'll move to the next one.
Eric, on the juveniles diverted, is that, do you know what the total juveniles encountered through the system were during that same period?
No, sir, I do not, but sixty is a great number. It's a large percentage of the juveniles.
Yeah, it's helpful to understand the effectiveness of the program to know as a ratio, what, how many that's of, so.
Yeah, I do not have that number tonight, Mayor.
All right, if you could follow up with it later, that'd be great.
So I do have an answer to that from my assistant chief. He said over two hundred fifty cases are reviewed, uh, not involving two hundred fifty kids. And so sixty have been diverted from juvenile court.
Okay, very good.
On criminal charges.
Thank you.
You want to take that question from Tom White at this point in time, Mayor, or you want me to move forward?
Um, I think we'll keep rolling.
Okay. Morgan, if you'll go to the next slide. So as I said, the, the governor's crime commission grant will expire on July or August of twenty twenty-two. So at that point in time, we will continue looking for grants to fund these positions. But if additional grant funding cannot be located, then we would be coming back to you for city of Burlington funding. We see this as a great opportunities for diversion and helping our community with youth diversion counselor, your crisis counselor or mediation specialists. But a combined salary would be one twenty and based on an average for mediation work with one step further, uh, would be forty thousand a year for a total of one sixty annual cost. But as I said, we will continue looking for grants to fund these positions. Hopefully, we can get those. If not, then the, that cost would need to be incurred, I believe. Keep us on our best track, uh, in twenty twenty-two. And I think we're down to the last slide.
Any questions from council on the diversion program?
Yeah, Eric, what's, what, uh, triggers that program in terms of for a young person? Is it, uh, specific incidents or, um, issues in the school in terms of what, what really, you know, puts a kid in that position where they could take advantage of this?
So it's a low-level crime, a simple assault, a minor larceny, things of that nature. That wouldn't be a gun crime. That would automatically be moved up to the juvenile court system for them to deal with. Whether, and it would be up to them to move that to court or try to handle and divert it from there, the court counselors. Uh, but these are low-level crimes that hopefully we can get their attention and divert them and keep them out of the criminal court system. A minor law, a shoplifting or larceny at Walmart or wherever, uh, that we would try to divert. And that's been going on for years, diversion. But these are special folks and we've got one lady that, uh, took a pay cut really to come work with us because this is her dream job. Uh, to try to help kids and keep them on the right, get them on the right track. And I think one question I will answer this, Mayor, but crisis intervention training CIT, we do that and it's a very big, high priority at this agency to have officers and supervisors trained in CIT.
Because we've got a lengthy presentation. If anyone has questions in the audience, please drop them in the chat and our staff can get with you on those answers. Um, so other questions?
Any other questions there?
I just want to say, I think this is a overall very good use of these funds when, especially when we look at the, um, the age of these kids and the fact that developing a criminal record or having that with you early on in life has some pretty significant tolls on somebody's ability to participate in society, to, to give back to our community. And so these diversion programs, I think, represent a rather small investment for a very large, long-term gain for our community.
Yes, there's another piece to this too, that, that would probably goes unrecognized, but, um, you know, some of these juveniles going through the court system actually becomes a badge of honor within a, a gang unit or a, or a, a group, um, that they have by entering into a diversion program, uh, such as this and spending time with, um, those counselors. You know, there's a, there is a pretty high probability that we're going to maybe get through to those individuals be- before it becomes that badge of honor and, uh, or, or street cred, I think, is the, is the term. But, um, uh, this was a program that we would probably not have thought to get involved in or fund unilaterally. But when this grant came up, I know I asked a lot of questions about it and it was really, um, good information to, good feedback to let us know how well it's working. I'm glad we participated.
Yes, sir. What you said is correct.
Very good. Any other questions from council on this? All right, Eric.
All right, and we'll finish up here talking about alternative community programs. So we were asked to look at, uh, cure the violence or other programs, Bull City United, uh, that we know violence spreads from one person to another like flu or the pandemic. Increases all suspects likely to committing violence or as, uh, Mr. Butler said, street fridge, right? So there are cure the violence, uh, which programs and what we found is mainly public health perspective and led by county health departments. So my staff went in and reviewed some more things, trusted members of the community, trying to spread the message to at-risk individuals to divert from crime. Similar to what we're talking about earlier with staff members, but then the community members can connect into jobs, healthcare, provide services. Inseptly supported by police, community-led, not necessarily led by law enforcement. Uh, we took a look at these programs and best case scenario right now, we decided that these are initiatives that are best considered by Chief Austin. And perhaps when the fall or winter of twenty twenty-one, we'll keep looking at it. Staff are continuing. There are other models where staff, police are involved, uh, not leading, but, uh, so we are, we'll continue. I believe we received several, a lot of information from Professor Duke. Uh, a lot to digest, review and digest. So we're continuing to look at this and we believe that there is a, an enforcement model with alternative community programs, just like we do, uh, for an overhaul three sixty approach. Uh, but mainly led by health departments or community resources. So that's where we're at with the alternative community programs. Anyone have any questions?
Eric, you reached out to the county health department and what was your response from them?
Uh, the response from, what I understand from staff is that they were not interested in an alternative program here similar to cure to violence or Bull City. Uh, so that's, we're still looking and reviewing and, uh, more conversations can be had at that level.
Other council questions? I do want to point out in that list of, um, other resources, there's, I think, some really important bullet points that I'd like for us to kind of keep on this, this discussion. Obviously, as the new chief comes in, this is really, um, something we'll dig in once he's got his feet on the ground. Um, but with the recent shootings in our community, um, this, some of the studies identified conditions that increase the likelihood of community gun violence. And the items they identified were easy access to guns by people at elevated risk for violence, income inequality, concentrated poverty, underfunded public housing, under-resourced public services, underperforming schools, lack of opportunity and perceptions of hopelessness and police brutality and lack of police legitimacy. And the reason I wanted to bring these up is because when we started talking about the, uh, police strategic plan and some of the pillars there, um, and there's, these aren't covered in those pillars. And so I think that's important for our council to widen the scope of community violence discussion to include focus areas like this, coupled with the data-driven nature of what BPD is doing and the knowledge they're gaining on the beat, on the ground, to, to look at some of these factors um, and then see where the city council of Burlington can make strategic investments that make long-term impacts on reducing gun violence in our community. So I just want to put that on everyone's radar. That's something I really like to talk about as our new police chief gets on the ground.
You know, in addition to that though, uh, when I asked interim chief Kearns to sort of give us a report on this, um, I am real interested in the, the, the community safety model right now. I, I understand all those other things are important. I, I completely get that. But, uh, the, the grant focus area, uh, basically focused on, uh, intelligence-led policing. And given the model that they, uh, put forth in this grant-focused area, that's exactly what helped us get to the bottom of it and make arrests in these last cases. And, um, you know, there's, there's two pieces to the puzzle, but we can put all the bullet points we want to put in it. But, but, uh, community safety is, uh, paramount when people are riding up the street shooting guns. And what you do on the backside of that to try to get ahead of the problem is, uh, is important. But at least for, for this councilman, the most important thing for me is to get those criminals off the street. And, uh, and I'm really happy to see that the intelligence-led policing model worked in this area. And I hope we get the grant. If not, I think we should strongly look at funding what their model is so that we can move forward with that.
And I think a huge thank you to all the citizens who participate in the Crime Stoppers program that feeds in directly to that. So we appreciate everyone who continues to serve as our eyes and ears and empower our BPD officers to do the best work they can in the community. I know that's absolutely critical to the speed at which we solve these cases and our success rate in bringing resolution to these cases. So huge thank you to our citizens and their support of Burlington Police Department through the Crime Stoppers program.
Yeah, good, good point. I, I think all that's important, but, but what I continue to hear, um, from residents that's been impacted is that, um, they just want to live in a community that's, they feel safe and their children feel safe. Um, I'm not trying to dumb this thing down, but let's just be honest here. Um, we have got to do everything we can to, to give that, all of our residents, that feeling that, that when they're in their home, um, and their children might be out in the yard, that the concept of people riding by and with guns and shooting into their property is something that no one needs to or should have to live with. Um, there's a number of ways to approach it, I'm confident, but I think at some point in time, a, a, a police presence of qualified officers with the proper intel is certainly the way we need to go at this in the beginning. Uh, because my fear is there's going to be some, some untimely deaths of some young people that's, uh, will end their, their life way too early. And it's just something that, you know, we see in Chicago, we hear in big cities, we certainly don't want to have that here in our community.
Other questions on this presentation? Chief, we appreciate your time and diligence on this. Any other action items, chief, you had for us?
Yes, sir. That was the end of what I had. Uh, again, Mayor, I would like to just think, uh, we have several citizens have been giving us great information and calls. And based on other great police work from patrol and our detectives, we're now to get several things cleared or get there before something else happens. So we do appreciate our citizens contacting us and working hand in hand with us.
Very good. All right, with that, council member Ward has about twenty more minutes with us, so we're going to try and keep it rolling through, uh, the agenda. We'll move on to item G, which is a fitness equipment replacement at City Park. And this time we'll recognize Director of Recreation and Parks, Tony Laws.
Doc, can you put my video on, please? Anyway, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I will go through mine just as quick as I can. Uh, Morgan, can you bring up, uh, the photos, please?
Tony, you have the ability to go ahead and add that.
John or Morgan, do you have those for him?
Yes, I'm pulling them up.
Okay, all right, Tony, just hang out for a moment. If you wanted to start covering your presentation while they bring that up.
Yes, sir. Um, this concerns a national fitness campaign. Uh, Fitness Court is supposed to be the best, uh, outdoor fitness, uh, court in the world as well. They advertise it. Uh, getting popular around the country. Uh, we have one as close as Meban to us and more in North Carolina. Uh, this is a partnership between the North Carolina Recreation and Park Association and the National Fitness Campaign. And we were one of four, four cities chosen for a twenty twenty-one grant of twenty-five thousand. Here's our present, uh, some photos of our present, uh, equipment at City Park. Uh, go through them pretty quick, Morgan, if you don't mind. They can see what, what they look like. This, this, I'll be talking, this equipment is our second set of fitness equipment at City Park. We, we started this back in the late nineties, early, early two thousands, and this is our second set. And, uh, it's pretty much worn out too. So, um, uh, they don't last long out in the weather all, all the time, even though these are powder-coated, uh, uh, items. And the moving parts of these really give us a lot of trouble with, uh, uh, breakage and so forth. So, uh, we, uh, we need something that's a little more durable and, uh, lasts a lot longer. And the National Fitness Court, uh, is warranted for twenty, twenty-five years. Uh, so, uh, and it has a lot of different features on it. Uh, can you show that video if you don't mind, Morgan?
Yes, it's going to take me just a second to pull it up.
Okay, uh, I'll tell, I'll tell you about this video. It, uh, there's a, uh, app that goes along with the video. There's instructions on the video. They, they proclaim a seven-minute, um, workout. Uh, but you can do a lot of other things too on it, but that's, that's what they, they feature. It don't take long to go through a workout. And, uh, you, you can do about anything that you want as far as exercise. Here, this is about a minute, little, little over a minute clip.
All right, doesn't sound like we have audio with this.
There's no audio, sorry. It's a, it's an indoor, this is an indoor demo, but this court is outside, uh, so this, they just have one of this big, big warehouse to show you what, what you can do there.
Tony, how does the lifespan of this equipment compare to what we've purchased before?
This is a twenty-five-year warranty on this, uh, fitness court. Uh, the other The other, other, we had a year, about a year warranty on any other exercise equipment we've ever bought because it's, it's outdoors and subject to a lot of use and abuse. But anyway, this is more durable, doesn't have as many moving parts. You can do a lot of different exercise on it, work out all parts of your body. The pull-up rings and stuff are pretty durable. They're not, they're not like your sliding parts that on a stepper or something like that would go along. Okay, thank you, Morgan. And we have, since I've been, I've been trying to do this for several years. In two thousand twenty, we got a, got the twenty-five thousand grant, too, but the pandemic messed up everything in two thousand twenty. So we were lucky enough to get it in two thousand twenty-one. That's twenty-five thousand. I've got a promise from the Impact Aliments Foundation. It's already passed their committee. They recommended to their board to give us fifty thousand. That'll be seventy-five thousand. It it takes a total of a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty thousand. It's what they say to buy this court and install it. We've got a request into another sponsor, a sponsor that has furnished a or paid for fitness court at another location. And we haven't gotten an ask from them on that yet, but if they come through, we won't need any city money. If we, if they don't come through, I would like to ask for some ARPA money for the the balance. Like I say, we've raised seventy-five thousand. We we're going to do the self-install ourselves. So that will save us twenty-five thousand. So if we we got fifty thousand of the ARPA money, we would have enough to do the court. We have a deadline. We, there was a sheet sent with my presentation on the council packet. It showed that we need to order the court by September the first to get it in and have it installed by the end of the year, which is our grant cycle time. So so I'd like to ask you to consider letting us take the grant money from the other two grants we already got and possibly get the third grant. And then, if not, use the ARPA money to to put the court in. And if you could add it on to the agenda tomorrow, that would give us time to get the court ordered by September the first. I'll be glad to answer any questions. I know the pandemic, we already had a lot of people outdoor exercising. We have three outdoor exercise equipment parks, City Park, Fairchild Park and North Park. And it's getting more and more popular. The pandemic made it even more popular with with people not being able to use indoor gyms. We had a lot of places in our parks where we allowed those gym owners to conduct classes free of charge, you know, because they couldn't use their their buildings. But we've, the the impact has created a lot of people that want outdoor exercise. Now, there's a lot more people walking through the parks. It's out in nature. It's not cramped with other people. Social distance is perfect. And so a lot of people wanting outdoor exercise. Every time we take a piece out of the park because it's worn out, I get calls about, are you going to replace that part? When are you going to get us some more equipment? You know, we need more equipment. So it's a big demand for it, and we're doing the best we can to meet that demand with this this new product. I think that will serve us a lot better than what we have currently. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Tony. Any questions from council on this item?
Tony, what, 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 what equipment will be this replace itself?
The the equipment at City Park, Harold, we're not going to take it out unless it's worn out. But we got two other pieces right down there that are on their last leg. So Chris Wright, our maintenance guy, has told them they're going to last much longer. So so this court will go at City Park, which will be accessible for everybody in the city. You know, we have free bus transportation now, so anybody and everybody from the city can get to City Park. We have a bus stop here to to be able to use this equipment, and it's completely free. There's no charge for it.
But but the court itself, it wouldn't go on a landfill, would it not? It would not go there, would it?
We could, we, it's got to go on a cement flat, a pad, Harold. So we will do some exploration down at the corner of Meven and Kitchen Street, where we have the other fitness equipment now and and also our walking track to see if it goes there. If it doesn't go there, we're going to put it between the dog park and our office building in that green area that's in front of the office.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other council questions? Any objections to including this on tomorrow night's consent agenda? Hearing none, this will be included on tomorrow night's agenda. Thank you, Tony, for your presentation. And go ahead and move on to item H on our agenda, proposal for land donation regarding a skate park. This time we'll recognize Economic Development Project Manager Blake Moyer. Welcome, Blake.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Evening, the rest of the council. I will share my screen. Quickly here. All right, I will roll through the, am I sharing the corrects?
We've got your presentation, yep. It looked like the cover slide, at least.
Okay, you're seeing the Burlington being the, okay, cool. All right, so we'll roll through this as quickly as we can. Start off here. So at the July twentieth City Council meeting, it was brought up about the proposed donation for a piece of land for the use of a skate park. Staff were asked to look into the legal barriers, the title and deed of the donation, and then the purpose of the donation and align with current priorities. So we are going to start with the authority accept donation. Short answer is, in general, yes. NC General Statutes allows the city to accept this donation of land. It's an acceptable use that cities are allowed to do, so we are allowed to accept the land for this use. Donors of the land can specify use. The Eva Barber Park across the street, across Main Street, that's an example of what we've done this in the past, where that landowner donated the land for recreational use. It's used as such. It can only be used as such when it's in the city's hands. Logan is not required to accept, and they can do that for any reasons, but you can't be, in general, yes, we can accept the land for donation in this way. Along with city council priorities, current plans and capital priorities don't list a skate park in them. The twenty twenty or twenty twelve Recreation Master Plan lists not having a skate park as a weakness for the department. And then it's listed in two different polling questions. I can go over those if you wish. But also in the twenty nineteen City Council Priority Plans, City Council Capital Priority Plans, it does not list a skate park. There are other recreational aspects in that priorities plan, but not a skate park. Any questions at this point? None, moving on. Environmental status of the property. Essentially, it's a big question mark. It's a we don't know at the moment. The property was previously used as a filling station. The nineteen seventy-seven draft of the deed for the property lists the use as a filling station. Staff corresponded with NCDQ for a couple of days and asked them a couple of questions about what data they had available on the property. The short answer is it doesn't come up in any of their different filters for either having a current underground storage tank, having a underground storage tank removed, an incident for an underground storage tank, or any laundry solvent incident on the property. DQ's staff's assumption is that either the underground storage tank for the filling station was removed before they started surveying in the mid-eighties, or it was just never registered, one of the two. If you walk on the site, you can try and you could probably assume that it was the first one, that it was removed previous, but that's just an assumption. At a minimum, staff would recommend a phase one and possibly a phase two to ascertain the environmental status of the site if council decided to move forward with this property. Project funding specifically for skate park on this property. Estimates immediately available staff have a wide, it's a wide range, essentially five hundred thousand, one point five million for skate park. Basically, it varies on the features and the size of the park. It's scalable, just like anything else. Currently, there aren't any project funding partners identified. Of course, what if city council decided to move forward with this project, staff would survey, you know, the assumed partners in the community and see if there was interest from community organizations in this project. One recommendation staff would make is that we consider the long-term costs of this specific project and then the other department capital, or department capital projects that are in process at the moment, such as the Carousel Project, North Park Pool and Willowbrook Arboretum, and just consider the current cost of those on the recreation budget, both for, you know, long-term costs of maintenance and security and cleanup, and then also capital costs. Lastly, property fit, getting down to the specific property. The image that right on my slide shows the property. If you can't see the different shadings, I'll outline them here in a second. Approximately, at the end of this, approximately twenty-nine hundred square foot of this property is usable for a skate park. There is a ten-foot perimeter from the building and from the project, from the property barrier at the top right. And then there's a ten-foot access easement in the left side of the property. There's a thirty-foot setback from Trade Street and a fifteen-foot setback from Main Street, leaving us twenty-nine hundred square foot of usable area for skate park. In short, that makes it quite small for a skate park. There's obviously ways to use that amount of space of space for a skate park, but it does, it is a pretty small version of a skate park from what we've seen in other places. One thing with this property specifically is that since we haven't done a lot of polling in the past, we don't know what the community thinks priorities are in terms of what needs to be at a skate park and where it would need to be. Those would be two considerations to consider with this property. If it fits those priorities from, you know, kind of community aspects of what they're looking for in a where, in a what and a where a skate park. I'm going to go over a couple of examples here in the next slides of different skate parks and kind of give some size comparisons. First, this is, so this is the smallest one I've seen in the area. It's the Glenwood Skate Park over in Greensboro. It's behind one of their community centers. It's approximately thirty-nine hundred square foot. It's a pretty kind of to the bones kind of skate park, has a couple ramps, a couple grinding bars, kind of the simplest kind of equation for a skate park that you could ask for. Relatively small, but still a little bigger than what we have usable at Trade Street. The next one is the downtown Durham Skate Park. This is at their Durham Central Park near the Farmers Market in downtown Durham, twelve thousand five hundred square foot. It has the bulls and rails, steps, a whole bunch of different ramps, very nice park. If you look online, there's a lot of really nice reviews of it. I really like this park. It has kind of everything that you'd want for an escape park. It seems to be well-received from the community that it's in, and it's in downtown, which means it's kind of accessible and easy to get to. There's all, there's all kinds of sidewalk accessibility to it. Again, that's twelve thousand five hundred square foot, so large, but just a good comparison of what a sizable skate park looks like. And the other local one, local-ish, is in Greensboro, Latham Park, fifteen thousand square foot. It has, again, kind of everything that you're looking for in a skate park, but the bowl and different ramps and bars. And one of the points to when we met with the business owners a couple of weeks ago is that there aren't any in Aliments County. There's no publicly owned ones for approximately thirty, thirty-mile kind of radius around Burlington. So the two Greensboro ones and the Durham one are the closest, and Chapel Hill are the closest ones in terms of publicly-owned skate parks. So in summary, staff just need more direction on what city councils' opinions and priorities are moving forward with this project and this specific land donation proposal.
Thank you, Blake. I know council member Ward's going to have to step off the call in just a moment or so. Council member Ward, any questions?
I'd like to make a couple of comments. It looked, you know, we really need to see, you know, how this fits into what otherwise long-term plans we may have for, you know, for recreation and parks. Number one, number two, obviously, look at the cost. Is this location, you know, sufficiently large enough for that? And I, and one other thing, I think probably if it, if we're going to accept this just for the use of a skateboard, a skateboard park, I'm not so sure. It's sort of like right across the street, we got Eva Barker. Of course, that's probably a little broader use that is to be used in perpetuity for park purposes. I don't know, I don't know, it'd be unusually restrictive to accept it for that because, you know, skateboard today may, may be popular and may be used, but, you know, ten, fifteen years down the road, it may not be. But, you know, what would it, would it be a reversionary clause in the deed? I don't know. There's, there's several questions I have, and I guess go to the bottom line. I probably need to think about this more, you know, before I can say yay or nay. But that's, that's pretty much where I am.
Okay, thank you. And Bob, anything else you wanted? I know we've got a couple P and Z items. Anything you wanted to add to your comments before we?
The, the P and Z, well, not, I'm familiar with the P and Z items. The other thing, I think Harold had prepared, you know, some proposals for, you know, filling the, you know, the vacant boards and commissions to the degree we can. I just want to say I'm in agreement with what he's proposed. I've looked over it. So I'm, I'm good to go with that. I'm familiar with the, you know, the zoning. So I'm, I'm pretty well squared away.
Just wanted to make sure you had time before you had to drop off, so thank you.
I certainly appreciate it. I'll, I'll sign off to now, and I'll see all of you tomorrow evening.
All right, take care, Bob.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, other council questions or comments regarding Blake's presentation?
I, this is certainly not the first time a skateboard park has been discussed over the years. The the closest thing that I can 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 reference this to is the BMX track. That was the city had, was built on its own property at Fairchild, at Fairchild Park. And the the concept there was it was going to be operated by a parents' organization, which we've been enormously fortunate over the years to to continue that that version of operation. And now, I was told recently by a friend of my daughter's in Raleigh that the Burlington Skateboard, Burlington BMX Track is the best BMX track, the best BMX track in North Carolina. The, in my former career in recreation, we looked at skateboard parks, and one of the questions comes up is operations and security, especially operations in reference to utilization of the facility. Am I so sure that, you know, I did not realize the square footage and we're talking about here, but three thousand square feet is is a really small piece of property once you start going in, especially doing any significant ramps. And what what I would would just bring up and ask the staff to look further into is the parks in Durham and in Greensboro, they, I'm sure managed by Parks and Rec. And is that, do they have staffing on 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 site when the the parks are open or not?
They do not.
They don't have staffing on site?
No.
Okay, but they're in a park itself. It's not, but they're, both of those are in a essentially located park, if I'm not correct.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I had a question, I think, for Tony, which is, I know we, the recreation staff recently put up some signs over at the arboretum asking skaters not to utilize that facility. I was curious. Obviously, skating is happening in our community. We've updated our ordinances to enable skating as a route of transit. Tony, where are we encountering skaters in our community right now?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, the three main places, you mentioned Willowbrook Park. Yes, sir, we have a lot of concrete greenway out there now, and that's very inviting for skateboarders. We have had to put up some signage in the Commons Building area where the restrooms are because they're skating through that. And it's, that's a close area, plus some damage is happening. And then we just recently opened up the Veterans Plaza, and that's all stone pavers in that particular facility. And and the skateboards can really do a lot of damage on the stone pavement. So so we'll, we've got temporary signs up there right now, but we'll put some permanent signs up that you can't skateboard in those areas of the park, the Veterans Plaza, the bridge between the two and the Commons Building area. You can skateboard on the other parts of the concrete greenway. That's number one issue that we're having for skateboarders. City Park is number two. The amusement park especially at City Park seems to be an attraction for for skateboarders. And also the stage area in City Park, because it's raised and they used to pull the picnic tables up next to the stage and use those for ramps and so forth. We've secured all our picnic Secured all our picnic tables, so they can't be moved anymore to cure that problem, but they still use the stage area for skateboarding. And the third area is the downtown area in the depot area, the court, the brick courtyard there. We've got a lot of damage on the bricks there. That's soon to be, having to be replaced down the road. Very soon, and they'll, they'll chip up those bricks pretty easy. And so. Those are the three areas that we're encountering issues with skateboards at this time.
Thank you. Other council questions?
Now, you know, the, the one thing that I do want to point out is we do have a Recreation and Parks. Master plan, a study that was done in 2012. And I do believe that there are things still left undone in that study, and namely, I've said it before. The, the severe lack of indoor rec facility. West of downtown. You know, ma- maybe we need to look at, I think planning is the key. I'm not, I'm not. I, I appreciate anyone offering to donate to help bridge a gap if someone sees something in the community. And I think that's extremely important that we understand and appreciate that effort. But I also believe that city government's got to have sound planning and understand. The, the cost and the benefit analysis, what the risks are, how, how do those things come into play? But it all needs to be part of a plan. And I, I would like to see us sort of incorporate into our Recreation and Parks Plan. What we would want out of a skate park at some point in time when there are funds available to do it, and then let's do it right. I, I'm, I'm for doing it right if we're going to do it, but I still believe it needs to be part of a larger scope of work. That has already been identified as more emerging than, than maybe what we're hearing there.
Yeah, I'm with you on that, Jim. I think the site definitely seems a little small, especially when you look at those right of ways on it. You have Eva Baker right across the street, which has a lot more elbow room and could use some, some kind of. Additional investment to make it more user kind of attractive. But I think as Blake kind of pointed out, there's an opportunity for some polling or some survey to get a better understanding from the community. And I think that rec plan, as you mentioned, is from 2012. We just finished the Olympics this year, so skateboarding is now an Olympic sport. It wasn't even probably considered as an Olympic sport in 2012. So the world of recreation has changed quite a bit in the last nine years. Tony, how frequently should we be updating the rec plan and is it due for a, an overhaul?
Yes, sir, it is. It, it goes through 2022, which is next year, and so we need to be working on it pretty soon. Before Rachel left, we had some money in the budget for a city park master plan, just, just city park. And, and Rachel and I decided that since the overall master plan for the whole park system was, was going to be. Up in, in, in a year that we needed to concentrate on doing a new master plan for the whole park system. Which would include city park and anything else, you know, and, and certainly could include some information on a skate park. So that needs to be done in the next year and, and we'll, we hope to be able to pursue that. And, and, and get a, a firm in to do that, that master plan update or a new master plan. The master plan we had, that Harold will remember, 15, for 15 years, was, was back in the nineties. And, and ended in 2012 or 2011. We now updated that one time for 10 years. Now we need to do a complete new one to get a new. Valuation of what's going on in Burlington and what's needed.
And honestly, the, the 2012 update. The firm that did the earlier one was involved, but they had changed principles and. I think Tony will, will agree that, that, that was not maybe the best quality of work we've ever received.
You're exactly right, Harold.
So I do believe I agree with everybody, what they've said. If, if we need to look at. And I think a skateboard park is certainly something that now has evolved over the years and still there in terms of use. But I think we need to look at the, the overall big picture of where it would be to be put. You know, where it could be most successful, because if you notice the two sites in Greensboro, they were at fairly major parks. Where there were other amenities there also. So, you know, I, I, I do like the idea of. Of certainly considering doing an RFP in terms of a master plan, updating the existing master plan. And to see, as, as, as the mayor indicated here also, recreation is changing, you know, what's next? And, and be on that verge of figuring that out in terms of going forward.
Yeah. Yeah, I think Harold, you brought up too, with security on the skate park. It's definitely something we've seen with some of those newer parks, as you pointed out. They're, they're fairly central and in big parks because cities have found out that that keeps them safer. High visibility, one, you're appreciated by the community and the skaters do a good job of protecting them and kind of keeping some of the. The undesirable activities out of those skate parks, but then they also last longer because they are front and center invisible. Seen that, Greensboro's seen that. Some of the parks that are older formats that are tucked away can be issues for cities in the long term. So, a lot, and I think it's something for us to continue to evaluate going forward with that, that plan. I, I did want, I've had some conversations with some skateboarders and a lot of parents in the community over the last couple of years and. They've shared a desire, one, they're like, it'd be nice if we had some of those skate parks like Blake put in there, something like that format. But the skate community is also interested in obviously making their own, as Tony brought up about moving picnic tables around. And there's some skate parks where if a private property owner provides a concrete pad and lets the skaters build some of their own. Ramps and other features on it, it would look kind of like that Greensboro one that Blake brought up where it's just a concrete pad. And then skaters build some benches and rails and ramps and kind of DIY user-built facility. And that might be a stopgap to propose back to the property owners here. So, but I know there's a desire from the skateboarding community, parents and skateboarders and skateboard mentors, which I think is a big part to think about this. Skateboarding is not a solo thing, just like athletics with softball or football or soccer. There are, there are mentors and coaches and people who folks learn from at all ages. In a same way as any positive, growing, engaging, recreation-type activity. But those folks have asked for any type of facility or even just better guidance on where they can participate constructively in this activity.
Well, and that goes back to what I mentioned earlier, when you're fortunate enough, like the BMX program, where you have a strong association. That mentors that program and operates it, it gives you some, it certainly gives you a sense of, of responsibility. And also just, you know, where, where you locate it. Again, you just, it's, it's just not the skateboard park. You gotta have the parking. You probably gonna need restroom facilities. I mean, so that, that's where I think the master plan should look at, you know, what might be a, a, a possible consideration. Going forward.
Very good. All right. Tony, anything else you need on that? Obviously, the master plan is front and center. Are we already kind of moving in that direction or would you like some? Head nod from council to? Further on that?
Well, we haven't discussed it with council, but I mean, any direction you want to give us is great. I, I think it's, it's definitely needed. Our, our plan expires next year, so we need to be making plans for extending. Excuse me, our master plan so that we, we will have a blueprint to carry forth.
And parks and recreation has changed so much in the last 10 years and will change for the next 10 years. Again, is, I think, you know, attracting a firm that can come in and have a vision. And as Jim mentioned also, the, if, if you look at, at our facilities across the city. We're very fortunate enough to get Davidson Park built in Springwood, but the one thing that if you take a look at. With the exception of a, of a, of a rental facility out at, at, at Lake McIntosh. We have no indoor recreation facility. Really, we have no indoor recreation center west of City Park and, and that would have to be included that a ways, which is really not a, a recreation center. And I can assure you that if you look around the state sees this, our size are much smaller like Kernsville and New Bern, Belmont. Moore County is all recently invested in building larger recreation centers based on the concept of, of attracting. People to the community and where we need to benefit from hotel motel tax revenues. So not only do you have it for your local residents, but also the option of weekend events that brings in. Substantial visitation to our restaurants and our hotels and our motels.
Yeah, I think we've always prided ourselves on our Recreation and Parks program and, Harold, I appreciate you sharing that our 2012 update on the master plan was kind of a mediocre update. So in some ways, it's doing us a disservice to have that and I think I'd be amenable to, to see in a proposal. For how we get an updated plan sooner rather than later. And then obviously that would be looked at by the full council. Recognizing only us three of us here tonight, so.
Yeah, I agree.
So.
We can, we can, we'd be glad to bring you something, Mayor.
Very good.
All right. Blake, anything else you wanted to add on the skate park portion of this? If you wouldn't mind sharing some of those comments with, with the folks with the property and.
Sure.
Yeah, so, very good. Council members, any further questions on item H on our agenda? All right, we'll go ahead and move to item I, Boards and Commissions Reports.
Good evening, Mayor. Everybody see me? Share my screen. Got two items to update you on. I'm gonna go over the, the plan development first and. It's going to be a little longer than you know and receive from me, but with the public comments that have been submitted, you may. May help you with this information as you talk to, to residents that call or ask questions. Everybody see that?
It's coming up now. We've got the map.
Yeah, I just put a little pin there, just to get everybody oriented. The PD is, is, is this corner lot here. It, it, the parcel stops about right here, but it's the corner of Church Street and Ashley Woods Drive, which is here, right here. Commercial development here and then over here, obviously you have University Boulevard. Is everybody seeing that? Rezoning map?
Uh, your screen went away.
All right.
All right, looks like it's coming back up.
Okay. This is a 1.87 acre parcel, a request to go from medium density residential to a planned development. It's there at the corner, as I mentioned, Church Street and Ashley Woods. The proposal is a single structure development. You have in your packet, and I'll pull up again in a second, the planned development master plan. It's a concept plan for planned developments. It has been reviewed by TRC Committee and several items have been offered by the developer that go above and beyond UDO requirements. As you recall, planned development was put in the UDO that would require development to go, not just meet the standards, but to offer things that go, that would go above that. I'm gonna bring up the site plan. Everybody see that?
Yep.
Okay, and that's, all this is in your packet too, but just for orientation. You see the corner lot here. As I've mentioned, this is a single structure development access coming off of Church Street and off of Ashley Woods. It limits the building, this is provided by the applicant. It limits the building to 80 to 85% being used for self-storage with internal access only. The remaining 15 to 20% will allow for your typical office commercial uses. The restriction on uses limits the traffic impact of the site as compared to a normal commercial or office, which typically contributes to a major increase of peak hour. And daily traffic. The access, as I mentioned, on Church Street is a ride-in, a ride-out only. And then you have a full access on Ashley Woods Drive. There also is a dedicated right turn lane that currently exists on Church Street. That would facilitate movements off of Church and Ashley Woods Drive. Based on comments at the P and Z meeting and other comments we've received, we've contacted NC DOT to evaluate the intersection of Ashley Woods Drive. As Church Street for a traffic signal. As you know, there are certain traffic thresholds that need to be met before NC DOT installs any traffic signal. The existing traffic that's there, which is what we've heard comments on, may meet these warrants. That's being evaluated at this time. And NC DOT, NC DOT was also included in the review of this site and did not offer the requirements for a traffic signal. Or any other transportation mitigation. As I mentioned, the site is limited to 80 to 85% being self-storage. But as with all of our intersection, then you know that DOT and City DOT will work together to look at this intersection now or in the future. Another item the applicant has offered is sidewalk along both sides, funded streets on both Church Street and Ashley Woods. Also is providing some right-of-way. You'll see a note here for public use in the future. That could be a gateway entry sign or any other public investment infrastructure that would like to be placed there. That was just an offer, as I said, for the planned development. They are limiting themselves to one ground sign for the development instead of two. The UDO would allow two ground signs at this site. Landscape buffer and streetscape planning is required. The applicant has committed to increasing any new canopy trees that are planted from the standard of one and a half inch to a two-inch caliber tree. But keep in mind that the owner plans to save as many trees possible. If you see the aerial that I showed, it is a tree lot at this time. There's a vacant house that sits on it. And they also receive credits for the preservation of trees. So there's benefit of, a cost benefit of doing that. So the expectation is that as much tree and vegetation is going to be left as possible. The building is also limited to 50 feet in height or three stories and has a maximum of 73,300 square feet. This is the one structure on the unit. The current non-residential use, right as it is now, it's in a medium density residential. But if you had a non-residential use, which is allowed, could go up to 122,000 square free, feet in a three-story building. So again, that's a limitation on the total square footage. Use of glass versus flat wall surfaces along the storefront is also being offered. As well as an entry tower feature. You see that in your packet information to have a focal point along the building. Building elevations were provided and I do note that because of self, self-storage units, the upper areas, you may not see windows and canopies. But that's just because of them being storage units. Most of the parking is oriented towards, away from Church Street. In the rear property line, the dumpsters in the back that you see will be masonry enclosed in masonry. So they will have, you know, hopefully minimal impact from, from other adjoining properties. Again, you've got vegetation that's already in place and it will be. That will be kept. The applicant also stated the operating hours are anticipated to be 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Also would include a management office on site for the rental unit facility. And again, that's going to be 80% plus of this building. Also indicated that the office and commercial usage, uses would be of service-related uses in the neighborhood. Would not be enough room or space to have regional type draws. That was his plan. He also advised that there's a neighborhood meeting going on. I think it started at 6:30 this evening to discuss, you know, the, the, the items of this proposal with the neighbors. And then lastly, in response to what could go there from the MBR residential zoning right now without rezoning could be. A family care home, a daycare, community center, a church, and also you have your residential uses, uses such as a duplex, triplex. Apartments or a single-family dwelling. It is a 1.87 acre site, so keep that in mind. Any of those uses, it's, it's not a large site. The Church Street corridor is commercial in nature and continues to redevelop with a mix of residential and non-residential uses that's similar to this. The properties within 300 feet were notified about the August planning and zoning meeting, and we do that as sort of a policy. Before the P and Z meetings weren't, weren't noticed, it's not required, but we do that now as a courtesy to hopefully get more public involvement. And engagement in our meetings. We also have improved our posting of properties. If you go buy properties, you'll see a bright yellow sign. For P and Z and then red when city council is going to consider it. So we post the properties as well, encouraging that. And then again, once this is scheduled for public hearing, it will be properly advertised. And also notification of the property owners. The comprehensive plan does call for suburban residential at this location. And this will be a change of the land use plan if approved. It is inconsistent and the property is limited by the planned development uses in square footage. But it's also located along a US Highway 7, 70 corridor, which is a major thoroughfare. Applicants provide several items that are. The applicants provide several items that are higher quality. And you can see that I didn't go over the design details in your elevations. But he has gone above and beyond the basic UDO standards. P and Z did support this unanimously at their July 26 meeting. Staff supports this submitted as well. And you have a option to recommendation on your sheet that speaks to the inconsistent with the land use plan, but supported by staff and the P and Z. This is proposed for September 21st for a public hearing. I'll stop there. Like I said, I wanted to. Yes, if, yeah, that was, that's the desire of council as well. I just said proposed date. Yeah. Several items in this, you know, that's what planned development is. But I just wanted you to get a scope in case you get questions about, you know, the 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 size of what this is, the parcel, the building, and what could be put in there as far as beyond the many storage. So that was all offered by the applicant to limit that building.
Mike, anything else you had on that?
Not not this time.
Any council questions regarding that?
Mike, back to back to DOT and the traffic count and traffic and so forth. Just from safety measures, not only along Church Street, but also if you turn off on to Ashley Woods Drive, those residents back there, when will we have some kind of a better understanding with working with DOT in terms of what their potential recommendations might be for signalizing or making an improvement to that intersection?
We made the request right after the P and Z meeting in July. I did want to keep in mind though that DOT did review this and did evaluate it based on existing traffic and traffic proposed for this site. And they did not recommend improvements. Not that that's going to be the answer, but they have taken this under consideration as part of TRC. But we are going through the evaluation process with them for the signal at the intersection. I don't know. We'll have it back in September, but.
Was there a traffic impact analysis done on this project?
No, it did not. Our threshold is 1,000 new trips or 100 in a peak either AM or PM peak hour, and it did not meet that threshold.
But some of the some of the uses that would be allowable by our current UDO, our current zoning standards would be, it sounds to me like they'd be a lot higher impact as far as trips generated.
Yes, sir, we agree. We think that that is possibly would need a traffic impact analysis. But the what's been proposed, especially with the limitation for the self storage greatly reduces that and probably one of the least impactful traffic wise, as you would have in AM or PM peak period for sure.
I mean, we've we've received, at least I've received a fair amount of comments today, and I'm assuming everyone else has as well. A large portion of those comments stem around traffic. And my experience has told me that this would probably be the least impactful trip generator that could go there. The reality of it is with with the economy being the way it is and development being pretty pretty wide open right now, infill properties are extremely desirable. So it's probably safe to say there's going to be something to get ready to go in this area anyway, just a matter of timing. But some of the comments were very well articulated. Their concerns were very well stated, but mostly driven around aesthetics and 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 traffic. But I I don't see traffic being the issue here. But the aesthetics piece, you know, it's just going to be different than a wooded lot. But it's going to be different than a wooded lot no matter what goes there.
Correct, yes. Yes, not, you know, I mentioned, you know, all the other features of the site, the lighting and and all that will be, you know, internally regulated and all that as well. But concern, yeah, I've received concerns as well. So I mean, we're just trying to address those and give you information should you get those questions.
So is there, they're having a community meeting this evening. Is that what you said?
That's what the applicant reported today at 6:30.
Okay, I, yeah, I'd be curious to know if there are any changes that come out of that to the plan. Could you fill us in if there are?
Yes, I will.
Okay. Mike, help us with the status of this. You bring it to us tonight. And you're talking about, I think, September 21st, you say?
Yes, sir.
I think what Jim said is correct. Obviously, the 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 emails that I'm reading here now are well written. And obviously, people want to live in the in the Ashley Wood area in Glen Abbey development concern. And 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 I can see why. But honestly, this is something very similar in terms of years ago when the what now the Harris Teeter Shopping Center was built, if you guys recall, the corner of Church Street there. And that was for many years, a wooded area where kids played. And across from, of course, then Holly Hill Mall. But, you know, when it was at some point in time, there was going to be some type of development there. So I think we need to take a look at this and certainly listen to what has been talked about by the by the neighbors. But also take a hard look at the the traffic counts we have now and what, how that might be impacted by by this type of construction comparable to what else, like you said. I think it's really important that we take the time to make sure everyone knows what else potentially could go there in terms of requests for development. Yeah, that's important because if you're if you're if your routine and normalcy is seeing a wooded lot there, two acre, 1.8 acre wooded lot and envision that that is going to change in some capacity or another. Whether it's whether it's what is allowable under existing standards or can you get this project as a as a someone that lives in that area? Can you work with the developer on it? And hopefully tonight they'll they'll come up with something that can. What is it we always say here? The devil we know is better than the devil we don't know. That's right. And it would be great if everybody could, might not always agree, but if you could work together in terms of seeing what. I mean, the reality of this, and people might not want to hear it, is that the property is going to be developed at some point in time. It's too valuable a piece of property and its location. Now, what's the best way? You know, what's what's best for everyone involved here, including the the surrounding neighborhood? We don't want to obviously create a problem for the for the neighbors. But in the same sense, the owner of the property has the opportunity to sell that property and and attempt for someone to develop it to meet the standards that we now have. So that's what we are. I'm real concerned with the ingress egress potential of of that intersection and whether or not the warrants substantiate there to be a stoplight there. When is the DOT going to get back with us on that?
We push them as fast and hard as we can. Yes. We're we're working with them to look at that. We're going to do some internal work on that as well. And maybe provide it to them.
Are we looking to put it on a on the, what'd you say, mid September?
September 21st.
Yeah. But assuming that some of this other stuff gets completed before then, the DOT.
That's what our assumption would be. We're going to plan that way.
Okay, yeah, I'm fine with that, but I, there's still a few question marks here. And you know, the the people that I've talked to that live in that area have been extremely nice to talk to and their concerns are valid. I'd just like to see a few more of those questions answered on their behalf.
I do want to point out there's a strong reason, as mentioned, why we do ask developers to go to those community meetings, which is that a lot of times resolution can be found directly between the council needing to intermediate everything. So we do hope that the residents participate fully in that process and are heard. And if they're not, we'll have a public hearing to continue to address that.
Yeah, and that's the benefit of having PD in our in our UDO as well. Put your best foot forward. Yeah, that's right.
All right, any other questions on this? Otherwise, the current proposal is September 21st for a public hearing. All right, a hearing now, it'll be September 21st. And Mike, you've got one other P and Z item, right?
Yes, I do. Should be coming up right now.
All right, we've got.
This is the the site that was that's adjacent on Hanover Road. The recent burial site was this small portion here. The remaining site is 14.2 acres in size. And it's rezone from medium density residential to light industrial. The comprehensive plan calls for this area to be general industrial. And the zoning request is consistent with the land use plan and is compatible with existing industrial uses around it. Staff recommends approval of this request as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission did at their July 26 meeting. And it's a straight rezoning.
Like, there's no proposed development on this. This is just.
There is no no development plan has been submitted at all. That's correct. And it's also suggested for September 21st for the public hearing.
Unless there's any questions, any objection to September 21st?
That's fine. I don't have any, Mike, just one question though. Access still remains would be off of.
We, as you recall, there was a condition that this would be accessed by one point of access to Hanford. However, they want to configure it, but be one point of access to Hanford.
Right, September 21st on that. That concludes our regular agenda items. Item J is city manager. Pardon anything you want to include for us? Pardon, you're on mute.
I have one item and also check to see if Morgan Lassner, John Vernon want to say anything about boards and commissions. My only item, I think there's been some email exchange about this over the last couple of weeks is there's a request to consider adding to tomorrow night's agenda cancellation of the September 7th city council meeting. So if council is still comfortable with that, I believe everyone's indicated via email or phone that they are. We would add an item to the agenda tomorrow on the consent agenda to cancel the September 7th city council meeting.
Any questions regarding that? I know council member Ward had made that request, so. All right, so that will be added to our consent agenda tomorrow evening to cancel the September 7th city council meeting.
Yes, sir. We have notified the folks that may be on the had planning items and they were all comfortable with the delay to the 21st. So last thing is if, I don't know if Morgan or John Vernon have anything they want to share with council on boards and commissions.
No, we got a couple memos. Council has been provided with the applications and including an update today.
Yeah, John's not on the meeting this evening. But yeah, you received, I believe, two emails from John today helping kind of clarify some of the things that have come in here in the past couple of days with appointments. So he and I are available to chat with you guys if you have any questions. I think he helped kind of prioritize the seats that we're looking to fill, knowing that we have nine applicants and 12 seats. So just let us know if you have any questions and we're here to help.
I don't have any, and I think we can, like we did last time, go through those when we've got Bob back with us tomorrow night.
All I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Mayor, I've got I've got one item I would like to bring up briefly, just just an update really more than anything.
Yeah.
At our at our board of trustees meeting with Par this past Wednesday, Scott Ryan gave a presentation on Par's initiative to really collaborate with local governments to share transit information on websites, to be sure that things were syncing up specifically to kind of create web links and to share both hours with Par, part without with link, to better communicate with transit riders about other options when they get to the maybe to one destination. What's next? What can we do next? So if if possible, Morgan or John, I think it'd be good at some point in the not so distant future to maybe reach out to Scott Ryan and get some details of Par on what it is they're looking to do. And, you know, and ultimately, it's just to share mobility options. That's it. But it's a it's part of a regional initiative to tie everybody together so that transit riders are not having to go from one website to another, to another, to another to find out how to how to get. We're seeing a lot of throughput riders now from east to far west. And the the multiple staging of various providers is a little cumbersome. So if you could put it on your list of other things to maybe reach out to him, I would appreciate it.
Absolutely. Yep, we'll do it. Thanks.
Morgan, we know you're not busy at all. Why?
I'm just sitting here looking at the other things that I know she's working on. I was almost going to ask.
Yeah, so, you know, just just hang in there and do the best you can.
All right, that's an easy lift. We'll we'll make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
You got anything else from council? I'll just throw in real quick, as we see COVID cases, especially with the Delta variant rise in our community. I had a meeting with mayors from around the triad and cone health last week. There's some strong concerns there. We're seeing actions taken by county health departments around the region. And so just want to remind folks the three W's still come into play, which is wash, wait, and wear those masks. They do work. And so as we ask our community to help us pull through the pandemic, we're not out of the woods yet. This is not over. Please continue to observe those three W's, wash, wait, and wear. So thank you, everyone. Anything else? Otherwise, we'll adjourn for the evening. All right, we'll see everyone 7 PM tomorrow evening on Zoom again. So take care.
All right, good night, everybody. Good evening, guys.
Bye.